Any more time? We ready to begin?
Let's get it done before I go.
All right, I'm going to call the order of this Aspermont City Council meeting on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty at six P. M. Jackie, would you be so kind as to lead us?
Dear Lord, we come to you thank you for the day and the blessing you have still upon us. We thank you for the rain that you sent our way and we just ask that you would give us a little break from that, Lord, if it be your will, so we can get some vegetation to grow. Also, we just ask you go with us now as we conduct the business of the people. We do it calmly and collectively. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Item number four, hoping for forum doesn't appear to be anybody here. Thank y'all for being here, for the weather and everything. Item number five, approved minutes from February thirteenth, two thousand twenty town hall meeting and February eighteenth, two thousand twenty, regular meeting minutes and take action as needed. Make a motion we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Moving on to item six on the agenda, accounts payable, discuss and take action as needed.
I'll make all second then.
All in favor? Item number seven. Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash three dash one seven. Cancellation of May second, two thousand twenty city election, discuss and take action as needed. I'm going to read this. Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash three dash one seven. An ordinance of the city of Aspermont, Texas declaring the unopposed candidates for the office of council member elected and canceling the May second, two thousand twenty general election to elect two council member positions. Whereas on January twenty first, two thousand ten, the city council of the city of Aspermont, the city council, ordered that a general election be held for the purpose of electing two council member positions. Whereas pursuant to sections one four three point zero zero seven and one four six point zero five four of the Texas election code, the deadlines for filing applications for a place on the ballot and declaring write-in candidacy for the general election have expired. Whereas the city secretary, in accordance with section two point oh five two of the Texas election code, has certified in writing to the city council that Jackie Bingham and Matthew Frazier are unopposed for election to this office of council member and. Whereas the city council hereby finds and determines that the candidates whose names are to appear on the ballot for said general election are unopposed, there are no declared write-in candidates and there are no propositions to appear on the ballot for said general election. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Aspermont, Texas, that section one, pursuant to election code two point oh five three A, the following unopposed candidates are hereby declared duly elected to the offices shown and shall be issued a certificate of election following the date on which the general election to elect two council member positions was to have been held. Council member Jackie Bingham and council member Matthew Frazier. Section two, pursuant to election code two point oh five three A, the general election to elect two council member positions heretofore called and ordered for May second, two thousand twenty, shall not be held and is hereby canceled. Section three, city secretary is hereby directed to cause a copy of this ordinance to be posted on election day, May second, two thousand twenty, at all polling places that would have been used in such election. Make a motion we approve ordinance number two zero two zero dash three dash one seven.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Yes. Accept ordinance number two thousand two zero dash three dash one. Next item, number eight, on the agenda, Public Utility Commission of Texas, discuss and take action as needed. If you don't mind.
You know, we get this every year. The way that it is, is if you accept, if you look on the back of it, if you'll accept their rates. The residential was one seventy-nine and it's gone up to one eighty-one. Non-residential's four thirteen and four seventeen now. Point to point, I'm not sure what that is, six nineteen, it's gone to six twenty-four now. If you accept their rates, then we don't take any action whatsoever. I mean, we don't do anything, you'll just make motions to accept their act of their rates. And then, because if we do, then we're going to have, we'll have to figure what, find out what they're, how they figure it. In the past, y'all have just accepted their rates. It's all up to y'all, how y'all want to do it. But that's basically it, it's just for that right-of-way access lines for our franchise tax and stuff.
I'll make a motion we accept the rate recommendations.
Second. All in favor? unanimous. Item number nine on the agenda, First National Bank of Aspermont, discuss and take action as needed concerning bank depository agreement. I will read this. Can we read the first? This was sent to us regarding bank depository agreement. Dear Tammy, city secretary, please find the above referenced agreement enclosed. Based on the recommendation of our auditor, we have developed this written agreement to acknowledge our responsibilities as your depository. The depository agreement in place will expire in May. Please review and have your appropriate representative sign the document. If you have any questions or changes are needed, please feel free to contact me anytime. Sincerely, Ms. Quinett Hill.
This is just a normal thing that we have to do.
That's just what they tell us, their auditor says they have to do and we have to do this.
If y'all approve it, then Stephen will sign and then and then y'all will sign also on the back page of this.
Make a motion we accept the bank depository agreement.
I'll second it.
All in favor? unanimous.
People sign their name. They just sign over here and I will, I can fill that part out.
She signed on the left and she'll do the right side.
Hope she moved right.
Yes. Okay, item number ten, Stonewall County appraisal district, discuss and take action as needed concerning some bids that we received. We got this March ninth, two thousand twenty regarding tax bid. Dear taxing entity, I receive sealed bids on three different properties. Please place these bids on your next agenda and let this office know if you accept any of these bids. First bid is on property legal address is Aspermont original town block forty-nine E two of twenty through twenty-two. The next bids are from two different people on the same property that is beside each other. The first property legal address is Aspermont original town block forty-eight, lot four and five, and physical address of one one two South Washington. The next property legal address is block forty-eight, lot six and seven, and physical address is one hundred and twenty, South Washington. I've included a map and appraisal card of the real property. If you have any questions, please let me know. Ms. Deborah Smith. Bid number one, lead entity Stonewall County, lead description, Aspermont original town block forty-nine, lot E two of twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Name and address of bidder, Mike Bookman, one 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 South Jackson Avenue, Aspermont, Texas, bid amount, two hundred dollars.
That's the one that's got the picture on it. Right beside his place.
Yeah, right north of his place. I figured he already owned that. That's where I thought it took him.
Doesn't it say he does own it?
He owned.
Or he had owned it at one time?
At one time, I think that was years ago, several years ago.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, it says two thousand six.
Yeah. I don't know if y'all have been by there, but I go down that way because I have hundreds that live there and they, he is really clean.
Yeah, he's done quite a bit.
Quite a bit.
That's where the, also Jackson Mobley and his wife, I think, lived there. Met there at one time, last inhabitants of that, weren't they?
Yes. Right behind Janice Craig.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
All in favor? unanimous. To accept Mr. Bookman's bid for Aspermont original town block forty-nine, lot E two of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-nine, two hundred dollars. Okay. And this is the two bids, right? On the same place.
Number two, two different bid sheets.
Okay. Something else I saw.
This one and then the next page is the next bid on this place property. This is from him and this is from her.
Got you.
On that one piece.
Okay.
That is the, oh, this is next to.
Yeah. Okay, lead entity Stonewall County, lead description of property, Aspermont original town block forty-eight, lot four and five, one one two South Washington. The name and address of bidder, Helen Flores, Aspermont, Texas. Bid amount, one thousand five hundred dollars. And second, lead entity Stonewall County. Legal description. Aspermont original town, block forty-eight, lot four and five. Name and address of bidder, Jeff Rash, of Aspermont, Texas, bid amount, any amount of eight hundred dollars.
Do we know what either one of them are going to do with the properties?
I think she's going to live with it. I think she's going to rent it by what she wants to do. I mentioned he's going to do what he always does.
Refurbishing that.
He's the guy that's been trying to turn around those.
Yeah. Yeah, just that's the, you know whose house that is around.
I think so.
Is it just that one structure?
Well, the next bid.
Next bid. That's the odd one, the other structure opposite of it.
Two different properties. There's something in the back.
I think that's an old storage.
An old storage room? Yeah, there's an old storage room in that there.
I guess either one of them will be good. I mean, I see it cleaned up for sure. If she's going to live there, then surely she'll clean it up.
That's the high bid.
And she's a high bid too, yeah.
By quite a bit.
I make a motion we accept Helen Flores's bid of fifteen hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Unanimous. That Ms. Helen Flores' bid, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for Aspermont original town, block forty-eight, lot four dash five. Physical address of one one two South Washington is accepted. All right, the third one. Lead entity Stonewall County, legal description of property, Aspermont original town, block forty-eight, lot six and seven, one two zero South Washington. Name and address of bidder, Helen Flores out of Aspermont, Texas, bid amount, five hundred dollars. And the other bid, lead entity Stonewall County, legal description of property, Aspermont original town, block forty-eight, lot six and seven. Name and address of bidder, Jeff Rash, out of Aspermont, Texas, in the amount of six hundred dollars. Pretty close to each other.
That's a little white house right next to.
It's right next to, right.
So it's this house, then this house, right?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, they're up there.
And then the eight-digit difference between the address numbers.
If you look at the picture, it kind of throws you off a little bit.
It really does.
Well, hardly for a hundred dollar difference, I don't have a problem with granting the sale to the one that we just sold adjoining property to, so they could have the whole.
Right.
The whole place. For, I mean, if it was a substantial difference in
Yeah.
in numbers, I would be for taking the high bid, but that's my, that worked the all.
That's the reason I was, I was trying to figure out how them houses, because I probably sit right beside each other too.
They are pretty close.
But just on the picture, kind of looks like there's something.
Well, I'll make the motion and accept Ms. Flores's bid on the second property here.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Unanimous that Ms. Helen Flores' bid for the property on that, Aspermont original town, block forty-eight, lot six and seven, address of one two zero South Washington, any amount of five hundred dollars is accepted. Okay, item number eleven, we have Texas Community Group. As I mentioned earlier, I had received a phone call earlier that interested people who we've seen at the last few meetings, wanted to be here today due to the storm and everything going on right now, chose to stay home. One of the, another reason just to have this on here is to see if anybody had any more thoughts, you know? We didn't know who was going to be here this evening, you know, if the weather, we're going to cancel people from coming, you know, including council member too. If anybody had any additional ideas or anything like that, or had any more response from public or anything of that nature.
On this, on this particular subject, and I intended to do it, but I've been kind of caught up trying to get my mom situated. Lady, I'd like to get with you and find out whether Lorenzo that had the, had the people that had the 501(c) separate and worked with the city on this, or was it?
Oh, yeah, who was?
One of those you mentioned in the last meeting and I couldn't.
And I can't remember.
Well.
Also, Lorenzo was one of them.
If, when you get time, if you can figure out which one did, I'd like to get in touch with the people who established that 501(c).
Right.
And try to get, I don't know who would, I'll either need to find somebody to get that rolling or get that rolling myself and see what it would take to get that done, because as I understand it, folks that want to donate to this cause, if they donate to us, it has to go into the general fund and being as that money's not appropriated for that already, then we, it creates a budget problem.
Right.
And I think that's why they established these 501(c)'s, because that money can be freely donated and then specifically addressed to certain addresses.
Yeah, I can definitely find that out for you.
I think there is already one here in Aspermont, pretty sure.
Is it set up for that or is it the, the hospital has a 501(c) for various different things?
I think about a week here.
Yeah.
Is there one already?
I mean, I know they are, but I don't know. I mean, I'm assuming that she's interested in this. I guess I shouldn't put words in her mouth if she's not here.
Well, that would be great. If we're, if we already got one, there would be no need, but maybe we can.
But I can still definitely find that out.
Can get behind that and start getting, getting word out to maybe some of the potential donors.
Right.
Make that available and if that's not an active organization, maybe get it reactivated if it's still on the books. I don't know what you have to do yearly to keep one of those things rolling. But anyway, I thought I would, I would try to look into those things and I didn't realize there was one here perhaps.
I put a copy of the trust contract. I know we agreed last time to move ahead with the trust property issue on that and I did, it included the contract in the packet that I received and for that. I did send it off to our attorney. She did have a couple of changes which I laid on you. I just got it the day I laid on the twenty-first box. It's not anything major that she refers to, just two, only two items is what it is all of. And they're supposed to be getting an updated copy of the contract that hers is going to go over again, making sure it's all.
So they're going to try to make the appropriate.
They said they didn't think of any probably changes what our attorney asked for, so.
I, well, since we're, I've already started talking. I've noticed, I don't know if you'd say several, but I have noticed a few people that have started cleaning up some things.
Yeah.
Several places.
Seen a whole house disappear that I'm on the side.
And I need to, I need to online as well, see if it dries up, but I have, so I think.
I didn't know they did, they took. I didn't either.
I didn't either.
Well, maybe community-wide this will spark enough interest that we can actually accomplish. Well, I guess it already has been something accomplished. It's good to see.
Yeah.
So that's the contract part of the trust private, but I don't know if we should wait to get those back and let her look over the contract again before we probably approve that. That contract. But I have been in contact with them a little bit and they have, I've actually got, they sent me a list of thirty-three properties that they're ready to push through to sell. There's a little bit of paperwork that I have to do, a little bit of looking into that I have to do, but I got a list of thirty-three properties that fit the first criteria to meet in to becoming a trust property for the city.
Which is good, that's quite a few properties, more than I expected.
Yeah. And those are, so they're not trust properties yet. Those are the ones that can become trust property pretty rather quickly. Also, in your packets, I included the interlocal agreement that we, that will be presented to each one of these, each of the entities after we approve the contract, because I'm not going to give them to that contract. Then they'll have to approve that if they see fit to do so. I don't know if you guys have read through them, I've read through them. I only, I think I only included the county one, I believe that's right.
Yeah.
But they're all the same except just the entity's name, which will be the hospital, the school and.
Have you already showed this to any of them?
I haven't showed it to anybody. I didn't want to give it to anybody until we actually approved the contract.
I didn't see anything that I thought anybody would balk at in there.
Yeah, I didn't either.
That I think, but.
And I remember you guys, I did ask them about us being the only one, you know, to approve that and they, they kind of backed off on that. They kind of said they really rather all entities, even though there's a local agreement, they would rather have everybody have some kind of say on what happens to the property. So that's kind of what we got, yeah.
Well, I can understand that, I just thought it would springlight it if it just had one.
And I really don't think any other entity would have a problem with that. I think we're uncomfortable doing that, which I can understand.
Well, that may create some liability on their, on their end, maybe not so much ours, but theirs.
So I just wanted y'all to be aware that I have those and these will be presented once this contract is signed and enacted, I will present these to each entity and that way they can make their decision if they want to join or not. But we do need, we have to have all three agree with us.
I think I kind of jumped out of order and apologize for that.
Yeah, I got, here's all the properties that I have and I got two pages of them that they have listed.
When were you given them?
This right here, like this, last week, end of last week?
Yeah. It's like a, what's his name over there from Paducah, Zach? The mayor, right?
Right.
They were telling us, and it's been said before, but probably have more trust properties than you think you do whenever they start discussions with.
Well, just driving around looking, you, you think a lot of this stuff.
And you're thinking, if we can't get them all as trust properties, at least the taxes will be paid up on them.
Yeah.
You know, if you force one to pay the taxes on them before they go to sale, because they'll. Uh, you know, if you force them to pay tax on them before they go to sale, 'cause they'll have that opportunity. And then we're just, uh, bring back up code enforcement, see if you guys have learned anything new or anything new, had any different opinion, changed your mind or anything.
Well, there him. I've been encouraged to see the, the voluntary actions that have already taken place without anyone having to ask anyone, especially to, to do anything. And I, I still would look forward to, uh, the five-oh-one, uh, C thing and see if there's some grants and stuff out there. I realize that would be way down the road that we could get and hopefully get a lot of this stuff done voluntarily to, uh, maybe not have to use the code enforcement angle. And, and I say that and I feel like, uh, as we move forward. Everyone's kind of on, on board with trying to do the main, the, the main ones on Main Street. I'm assuming that everybody's kind of focused on that.
Of course, I, I don't talk to many people, but everybody I've talked to is, is definitely in favor. They would like for us to proceed forward with the code enforcement portion, but I don't talk to a whole lot of people, so.
Don't have a good representation, probably.
Understand that concept.
Y'all have any more information on it or?
I, I don't. I, I haven't either. I haven't heard from anyone else since our last meeting. I've never heard from public either. Say either way to me.
It's kind of like what Jackie says, I've seen things here and there, um, and like you said, um, hearing positive things about it. And then, you know, stuff on social media, which either on personal stuff or through the newspaper sites, uh, you know, there's comments from other towns and stuff and it's as you would expect. There's some negative and positive both.
Well, there, there's one individual, I, I won't name names, but there's one individual here that, uh, I didn't realize had, had had some things going and, uh, just happened to be by their place. Just in run-of-the-well daily activities, but anyway, I was extremely impressed with that, with that gentleman's property from what it looked like, say, a month ago to, to now. It's really. And I know we can't necessarily name names and, and give attaboys, but I, I, I think if we, if we see that particular gentleman, some others may know who we're talking about, tell them thank you.
Was it me? Was I cleaning my yard?
I haven't seen you do anything. Not that I've been looking, but I'm just, just saying.
I, I moved as much as I could for as fast as I, if I could, for a minute.
Then you turn around and look behind it and they've already grown like that.
Yeah, that's right.
Got any thoughts on any name, man?
Well, and, and that, do, do we need to just table this, since it's an item and it says discuss and take action, or we just skip it to, to next time and continue?
You'll have to table it, I think, yeah. That's what, that's what you wanted.
Well, and I don't want to make a decision without having, I, I prefer us to be full.
Yeah.
Full seat, so.
Motion's to table.
Do they have individual ones or just a motion of per? Make a motion, we table the item eleven, Texas Community Group.
I'll second it.
All in favor? unanimous?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, until next meeting.
Uh, I'm sure. And then we're not doing anything on the contract, right?
Right.
Item number twelve, uh, City Administrators Report, discuss and take action as needed. A broom attachment for tool cat.
Uh, including everyone's packaging, uh, a bid that I got, our prize I got from Bobcat House and the. Adling for a broom attachment for our, for our tool cat. We have a sweeper attachment for it, but it's, it doesn't do what we need to do. I think this thing will help us with the streets as far as keeping them clean and maybe cleaning up some of the potholes before we fix them, uh, sweeping them through. The sweep, the sweeper we have now, it sweeps into a bucket and you have to dump it and we can run it like ten feet and it's full. Uh, this takes too long. This is an actual broom, like you would see a road crew.
Kicks it out.
Yeah, and it kicks, actually kicks, kicks it out, yeah. And I know you guys have heard, just like I've heard how terrible our streets are doing right now, and they are, they're, they're terrible. This rain has not helped us at all. Uh, I actually, I got a new load of material in, uh, to start patching on the streets, but I haven't been able to use it. It's still back there full load, 'cause it's just, it's just too wet. And it, that does kill our roads. I let everything being wet, the water gets underneath there and it just tears them up when people drive along. Uh, so I'm looking at doing a lot of street work and then hopefully, we can do a lot of seal coating too late in this year. Uh, probably looking to spend thirty-five, forty thousand dollars on, uh, sealing the streets if I can, running this year.
Kurt, I was talking to your head, do you know, does that? Does that price sound, is that right for a broom attachment?
Um. Seems a little high to me.
That's sort of kind of what I was seeing.
But, and for something that size.
Yeah. It's all hydraulic and everything, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it just plugs right into the tool cat. It's like a skeet steel wooden.
Yeah. Does it angle?
Yeah, it's angled.
I think all the stuff for a tool cat is pretty expensive though.
Yeah, and they wouldn't take ours. I tried to sell them back with our sweeper and, yeah, they don't, they don't have no brand for them, so they, they wouldn't take it back. Even take it as trade and they wouldn't.
I don't know what a, um. I, I haven't priced a used, just broom, just a rotary broom.
Just a regular broom.
By itself. And I don't know what, what there was, they're like thirty-six or something, brand new, but I don't know what use it is. They let you try it out first to make sure it works?
Uh, I don't know, they might. I bet if I talk, much money as we spend earlier, they might, uh, let me get one.
Might be something to look into.
Free cores or something?
Yeah, they might.
I don't know.
Never thought about that.
Be interesting to see how, how good it works. Side by side comparison before, before we leave town.
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely do that.
'Cause it might be cheaper just to look at renting. And those things rent for about twenty-two hundred dollars a month, so it might be cheaper to. Just to look at renting one, you know, for a month or so.
Until you get them.
March, April, something like that.
Right.
Or kind of coordinate with before somebody comes in silk hats or whatever.
Right. Yeah, I can do that. I'll, I'll talk to them too. We can do that. I guess we can move on to item B then. Sick, sick time donation. I don't know if you guys are aware. Kenny had to have quadruple bypass, uh, about two weeks ago. So he's been out. Uh, he went in for a stint on Friday. They couldn't get it in. They found a lot more things wrong with him Sunday morning. He was on the table and then quadruple bypass. Uh, he's been out, uh. While this is on here, he, he had enough sick time and enough vacation time to cover his last paycheck. He has partial sick time to cover, uh, some of his next paycheck. And I know some places do it. We don't have a policy to do it, uh, where, like, the guys, being like myself and the guys can donate some of our sick time to make up, uh, for the lost time on his check. Or anybody that wants to, you know, uh, that we have built up on ours. Uh, they are not forced to do it or volunteer. If they want to do it, they can. But that, that, uh, 'cause he's gonna be out, I'm thinking two more pay cycles at least. I know we can cover one, uh, with that sick time. Uh, he does have some other stuff that we're looking, that he's looking into where he can get, uh, paid some money, uh, through our Aflac policies and things like that. But I was, I was wondering how you guys felt about that, being for us, being able to donate him some sick time to make up for the, for the time he's losing.
I'm for it. I'm, I think if that's what y'all would like to do, then.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Not mine, yeah.
Yep. Well, I appreciate that and I bet, bet he will too. I haven't told him, I haven't told, I don't even know if he's seen the agenda or not.
No.
But I haven't told him I was gonna ask.
I hadn't either.
I know it's coming, so.
We worked on his Aflac stuff today and sent it off. Don't know yet on anything on that, but.
It'll take a while to get that rolling anyway, but it will.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
And I'm willing to donate some of mine too, so.
Do we need to make that in some type of official action to have it on, on record that that's okay or?
Yeah, I would do that. I would, I'd make a motion.
Okay. Well, if y'all word it, I'll make the motion. How about that?
I'll word it.
Um, yeah, how do you, yeah, how do you want to word that? To institute, make a motion to institute the ability to, for sick time donations?
Yeah, as well as giving.
For employees to donate sick time to other employees. Would that work for y'all?
Sounds good to me if you, if it covers what y'all need.
Is that alright?
That's our plan, yeah.
You made the first.
Second. All in favor? unanimous?
Uh, just a quick update on things that's been going on. We, of course, rain is about it. Uh, they said the streets are in pretty bad shape. I'm aware of that. Yeah, I know you guys are gonna hear that. I know I've got complaints about the alleys. Thing about the alleys, it's, it's really too wet. We'll tear them up too, really get back there and, and do anything looking. And being shorthanded as we are right now, alleys, as long as my trash truck can get through them and I can get through what I need to, then they're, they're okay. Till my trash truck tells me it can't go and want to get through them, then we'll do something with them at some point. Uh, speaking of being shorthanded, I did run an ad in the paper, uh, for a new hire to replace, uh, the termination that we had, uh, a couple of months ago, 'cause we are, we're getting way behind and it's gonna take some time. We did, that's good. I think I have four already in file, uh, in Tammany and Tuss, and we had to pick one up. 'Cause we're gonna have to replace, I know we got, we got a whole block of sewer line we're gonna have to replace. It's just, it's, uh, it's malfunctioning very badly. And Steve's been calling on it several times. Surprised the phone's not ringing now, 'cause the rain is, it makes, it's making it bad, yeah. So, we let off, we allow infiltration through that specific line. There's like nine taps there that are no longer being used. But then, and nobody's ever said they capped them. They're probably just there sucking in water, if not fell into the mains. So we're gonna replace that whole, whole block of sewer line.
Where is that?
That is.
Kerry Lee's house, right Kerry Lee's?
Yeah, it's farther down from Kerry Lee's. It's Kerry.
South.
Kerry Lee's is where the problem started. And it actually, if you go farther south to, uh.
Three blocks?
Yeah, you, you know, I don't know if you guys know where George and Mary's mother used to live? Right there, it's that alley right behind there. And there were all those houses on both sides that used to be there and there, there's not, there's one house that is still in use and that's, uh, Sidney Maddox, that trailer down the corner. Other than that, all the rest of them gone.
Dead and gone.
And that's where we keep finding a problem right there, so we're just gonna tear that completely out and put new pipe in there, but we're gonna need some help to do that. So hopefully we can get a new hire. I'll run it for two weeks and, uh, do interviews after that, see if we can get somebody hired on. Other than that, I think, if I'm thinking, I think that's all I have.
About what's going on with the school, with that line?
The school is, that's the school sewer line.
Okay.
Uh, so there, that's, Kelly's down there tearing it up. But it's not, it's not actually, part of it's our line. Uh, what happened is, when they ran their machines on and put that concrete on there, they crushed our line, is what happened. And it's been that way. It's actually since that school's been that way. Just when they, you have a bunch of kids there is when you can really tell. So we'll, we will look, since it is part of our, our main line, I told Zach to get, get me the estimate and we'll look at maybe paying for part of that. 'Cause part of, we're not paying for the concrete. I already told them we're not paying for any concrete, uh, fix or anything like that, but the actual sewer line, we may pay for part of that, 'cause some, it is the main that runs through there.
Where's it run?
It runs, and actually, just from where they're digging, I don't know if you, have you been to this school?
Um.
To see where they're digging it. Well, it runs right there to front of the gym and then it comes down this, this way. So, and our main runs that way and into that man home, then runs that way. But they are, they're replacing all that right now. And that, part of all this rain stuff, I think, is, we got caught up.
Yeah.
It's, it's been, it's caused lots of issues with our sewer lines right now. I'm surprised my phone hasn't, my phone just rings. So I figured someone's calling about sewer lines under. Uh, we got a lot of infiltration around town and it causes problems. So we're trying to cut that out as much, as much as we can. And I think that's all I got right now. This time's over for me.
I'm making a motion to the mayor.
Second. All in favor? unanimous? City Hall, City Board's want a city hall council meeting during six forty.
How many people have you had ask you, what are you doing there, paving your little area back in there?
I haven't had any.
Have you realized? That's probably that's for you. First I was gone, I was in Colorado, I was like, so. You had a chance to look anything, any numbers or anything or work that out?